I'd like to bring the Topeka County Planning Commission of January 20th to order. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start out with some Planning Commission business to get it out of the way. Any report from staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to report that we forwarded information to your commission concerning Brown Act training that is going to be provided by Deputy County Counsel Carlin Drivedall on Friday, February-
I can't hear you, Deb.
That we are providing- County Counsel will be providing training. Can you hear me now, Peggy?
Much better.
Okay, thank you.
One of those over there, please microphone.
Um, we could try that. You want to get that? All right. On Friday, February 5th, from being 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., right here in the Board of Supervisors chambers, if you're interested in attending, Counsel is here tonight. You can let her know directly or let Karen or me know, and we will get you registered for that. As a reminder, you- is it going to reach? Are not required to attend this training, but your commission is subject to the Brown Act, and it may be of interest to you to attend. The other thing I'd like to report on is that we do not have any items for your regularly scheduled meeting on February 3rd, so we will be canceling that meeting. That's all I have to report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any reports from any of the commissioners? All right, no, no reports, okay. Report from the Planning Committee representative?
We have not had a meeting.
Thank you. Report from the Ag Advisory Committee representative? We have not had a meeting. Minutes of the meeting of December 16th, quite voluminous. And of course, that was a voluminous meeting, as far as that goes. Any corrections or additions to those minutes?
I will accept.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion second to accept, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Wait a minute, stop, stop.
Roll call, Mr. Chairman.
We've got to do it this way.
Roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just for the audience's benefit, to let them know that we do have two of our planning commissioners attending this evening's meeting via teleconference. That is Commissioner John Lattori and Commissioner Peggy Mosley. And under the Brown Act, we are required to conduct a roll call for all of the votes taken this evening. So with that, Commissioner Ry.
Aye.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Excuse me, Vice Chairman Baker. Chairman Plan.
Aye.
Commissioner Frazier.
Aye.
Commissioner Presbilla.
Aye.
And Commissioner Lattori.
Aye.
Commissioner Mosley.
Aye.
Are you able to hear our discussion?
You're sounding really good right now.
Okay, great, thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Next item we have is public comment on any item that's not on the agenda. Anybody wish to address the commission on any item that is not on the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm a member of the public, and I would like to encourage you to attend the Brown Act training, because I think that's very important. And I also want to commend you in the open and public forum, Chairman Plan, for how conscientious you were at the December 16th meeting.
It's not audible, please.
Okay. I'm trying to commend Commissioner or Chairman Plan-
Yeah, let's say that real loud. Can you hear that, John?
I should say that real loud, given our history. So I do want to commend you at the meeting on December 16th, because you very conscientiously made every attempt, I counted at least four, to allow every member of the public who had something to say to come to the podium. So if they didn't come, then they were tough out of luck, because you gave them every opportunity. And for me, as a member of the public, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to address the commission? If not, we'll close that, and we go to our public hearing. And I'd like to welcome everybody here. We've got two items on the agenda, and we certainly appreciate everybody coming so we can get their input. That's our job, is listen to the public and try to make the most rational decision we can based on the facts. So with that, the first item is the Pine Mountain Lake Anthem Telecom poll. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have received an application from Anthem Telecom to- for a conditional use permit to allow a wireless communication facility, which would consist of a 100-foot-tall monopine tower. That means it's going to be constructed to look like a pine tree. Initially, the tower would have up to nine antennas and would also have four outdoor equipment cabinets. There will be two smaller cabinets, one for power and one for a connection to a land-based phone line within a 60-by-60 fence compound. This particular project's being designed for future expansion. Ultimately, this particular monopine tower could accommodate four wireless carriers with up to 36 antennas. So again, they are planning ahead. The property is located at 12742 Park Court, approximately 600 feet from the intersection of Mueller Drive and Park Court on the Pine Mountain Lake Golf Course.
Did we lose anybody?
I don't know.
Peggy, you still there?
I'm here.
John, you still there?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Okay. The Pine Mountain Lake Golf Course is owned by the Pine Mountain Lake Association. Again, as I mentioned, this project is proposed to improve communications in the Groveland community. Petition was submitted to, I believe it was Verizon, in March of 2015, that had been signed by hundreds of residents of the Pine Mountain Lake Association stating that they did not have good cellular telephone coverage. And as a result, the project is being proposed. Section- Chapter 17.53 of the Topeka County Ordinance Code establishes regulations for telecommunications facilities. As noted in the staff report, there are many types of information that must be submitted in order for you to even consider this project. The applicant has submitted all of that information, including alternative site locations, which they found would not be suitable, where the service areas would be for the proposed project, the photo simulations of the project, so you will know what it's anticipated to look like. So all that information has been submitted. One of the other requirements of these types of projects is that they be reviewed by the Airport Land Use Commission to determine whether or not the project is compatible with the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. On December 3rd of 2015, the Airport Land Use Commission did determine by unanimous vote that the project is consistent with the compatibility plan. As we process this project, we do early consultation, meaning we submit letters to neighboring property owners. We received three letters in opposition to the project. Concerns expressed in those letters were that the project would lower property values and would impact the visual quality of the area by interviewing with a view shed from neighboring residents. Those issues have been addressed in your gender report, and we are satisfied that the project, again, has been designed that would not result in those concerns that were expressed by the neighbors. We also received 20 letters in support of this project. I will note also that the Topeka County General Plan has an economic element, and within that element are policies that promote improved and enhanced telecommunications facilities be constructed throughout the county. This project's proposed to fill some gaps in communications in the Groveland area and would be consistent with the county's general plan.
Okay, questions, excuse me, questions of staff? Well, I've got one right- what's the relation of this project to the one we approved maybe two months ago for also for a cell tower?
Separate, different applicants, and actually their service areas, there might be a slight overlap, but the maps that they showed us would not be a significant overlap.
Really? Yeah, because it's only, what, two miles away or something, Jerry?
I would make it a little more than that, but it's also, there's a lot of terrain-
Yes.
-separating those spaces.
Okay. So the other one, the first one, will likely still be built as well?
We have not received- oh, actually, we did receive a billing permit, yes, so that one is moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Questions of staff from the commissioners? Okay, don't see any. We'll go to the public hearing. Let me have a show of hands, how many folks would like to comment on this cell tower? Okay, well, I don't think we need too much of a time limit, as long as you don't put us totally to sleep, sir, so if you'd like to come forward and give us five minutes or so of your best.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I will. My name is Evan Shepherd Reeve, representing Anthem Telecom and Pine Mountain Lake Association as far as the applicant for the project. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, and staff, happy to be here tonight, and I will not take much of your time, and I will not go over all the little details about the project. You've already had them, and staff has reviewed that well. I do want to point out, though, that this site is specifically designed to cover the Pine Mountain Lake area, Ferretti Road, part of 120 and up to the airport. It's not specifically designed to cover Groveland, that would be the other site that you mentioned. It's a different service area. This one was very interesting, and it was really a pleasure for me to work on this one. I don't know, am I loud enough for the remote? I hope so.
Peggy, can you hear right?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So what's unique about this one is rather than the carrier coming and looking for a place to broaden its network, this was a request from the Pine Mountain Lake Association for the residents, saying, "We don't have enough coverage here. We don't have the safety net that we are expecting. We don't have the communications abilities that we're wanting. What can we do about it?" Pine Mountain Lake Association met with Anthem Telecom, and they brought this petition of almost 500, approximately 500 Pine Mountain Lake residents, presented it to Verizon as well as to some other carriers, and Verizon said, "We'd be happy to come and fill this gap and provide service to the people of Pine Mountain Lake." That's how this one came into being. There is a letter of intent from Verizon, saying they're on it. They did a lot of the technological work in designing the site and ensuring that it met all the specific requirements for approvals, to meet the coverage gap requirement, that it was going to fit well for the community, but also to hand off the signal, the network, from the airport to their other sites down south. And it does that. Before even submitting the application, I met with Mr. Laird, went over all the requirements. We submitted a very complete application. There was a little bit of recommended changes by staff, and we incorporated those few changes, fence color, some other things. We meet all the requirements for aesthetics, that the site is designed as a monopine, so it's a pine tree that is connected to the pole itself. The antennas will be painted to match the pine needles. Everything will blend, and you can see from these photo simulations that it really does blend well with both the natural as well as the man-made or the man-built environment. That was very important to us, that it looked good. It was very important to Pine Mountain Lake Association. It had to look good. It's located near the maintenance yard in an area of the golf course that was used for storage. There is a berm there, there's already trees, mature trees, everything to help to both screen and enable the site to blend with the natural environment. We met all the noise regulations. We were approved by the Airport Land Use Committee, had FCC approvals, FAA approvals, California Public Utilities Commission requirements are all met. We've met all the radio frequency requirements. We got a letter of approval from the Groveland Community Services District and from the Sheriff's Department. When I spoke with Lieutenant Erhardt at the Sheriff's Department, I was very surprised to hear that his support of the project was based on the fact that the Sheriff's Department can't use their in-car computers in Pine Mountain Lake. There's not enough coverage. They can't provide the same service to Pine Mountain Lake as they can to other areas. So their letter of support is, I think, an important factor weighing in the importance of the site, not only to the residents, but to the people who are hired to protect those We have reviewed the staff, the staff report, the conditions of approval, the property owner and the applicant. Both have signed the conditions of approval. It's a good project. It looks good. It'll serve the community. It meets all the requirements, and therefore, we're asking for your approval tonight. And I'm here, and we have other people here who can address any questions that you might have.
Okay. Any commissioners have any questions? Yeah, Mr. Baker?
Of the, you know, round numbers, 3,000 or so lots that are on the inside of Pine Mountain Lake, is there an estimate as to how many of those lots will now have cellphone coverage as a result of this effort?
When we look at the coverage maps, the, unless there is something blocked by topography that couldn't be picked up from the airport site, it's providing complete, as complete coverage-
So you expect it's going to be rare, that you have a place in Pine Mountain Lake where you can't be covered then, as a result of this?
Rare, I would expect it would be rare, yes. The site is designed not only for Verizon or for other carriers to come in in the future, should the desire and the need be there. I think it's one thing, I saw a raised eyebrow about the infrastructure that would be required for future carriers to come in, and it's important for everyone to recognize that any other carrier that wanted to come in and co-locate on this pole and on this site would have to come before you and meet all the same requirements, not only on their own, but for the site. They would have to ensure that what they were adding to the site combined met all the county requirements.
Okay. Peggy or John, you got any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. As a resident at Pine Mountain Lake, my home is within a quarter mile of this site, and I am so looking forward to it, because then I can quit paying the extra money for the additional equipment to get service.
Okay. John?
I don't have a question, but when the public hearing is closed, I would like to make a comment.
Sure, okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to comment in favor of the project? Don't see anybody. Anybody wish to comment in opposition to the project? Don't see anybody. Anybody wish to comment neutrally? Don't see anybody, and with that, we will close the public hearing, bring the matter back. John, give you a first chance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's not very often that we have the pleasure of considering a project that so clearly benefits the health and safety of the public with a truly minimal negative impact, and I plan on voting aye twice.
Vote early and often.
Okay, we'll see about that. Okay, the matter's back to the board. Any board discussion or ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion if we think we're there.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I move that we approve, excuse me, conditional use permit 15-015, based on findings A through F and conditions 1 through 27.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion second. Any further discussion? John, Peggy, any discussion?
No.
I'm done.
Okay, with that, I call a question on-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Roll call.
Call a roll.
Thank you. And as a reminder, your planning commission is a decision-making body on this project, but it can, your decision may be appealed to the Board of Supervisors. For the roll call, Commissioner Ry.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Baker.
Aye.
Chairman Plan.
Aye.
Commissioner Frazier.
Aye.
Commissioner Presbilla?
Aye.
Is that better?
Close.
Commissioner Lattori?
Aye.
And Commissioner Mosley?
Aye.
Based upon the roll call, the motion passed by unanimous vote.
Okay, that takes care of that one. Now we're going to get into the main event, I think. Thank you, gentlemen and lady, for coming.
I'll be checking my cellphone coverage when I get home, just to see how well you've done. I just hope I don't hit it right into the fairway.
You guys want to put this up on your fireplace?
You might need it for something, I don't know. There's one more there.
Yeah, there's one right there.
Okay, this order of business has to do with a medical marijuana ordinance, which I think everybody probably aware of, one way or the other. And the public hearing will be in the following order. Those in favor of the proposed ordinance will be able to speak first, followed by those who oppose the ordinance. This discussion is strictly limited to what this ordinance is being proposed, and then there'll be a chance for anybody to just speak neutrally, and then there'll be an opportunity for rebuttal and surrebuttal. Okay, having said that, staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For some of you, considering the medical marijuana ordinance may give you deja vu. It was two years ago, on January 15th of 2014, that we were here considering a different ordinance to address this issue. I want to make that very clear. The previous owner ordinance proposed to clarify the county's current provisions in the zoning ordinance that all cultivation and all distribution of medical marijuana would be prohibited. Again, that ordinance was considered by your planning commission at a public hearing. Your commission ultimately recommended to the Board of Supervisors that it was premature, that it should be sent to a task force, and that also that any ballot measures that were being discussed at that time be considered. So some things don't change too much. In the last two years, well, I should stop, I step back. In 1996, 20 years ago, the voters of the state of California passed the Compassionate Use Act of 1996, which allowed the use of medical marijuana in California to ensure that seriously ill Californians have the right to obtain and use marijuana for medical purposes, provided that they have that deemed appropriate by a physician, and to provide that they would not be prosecuted or sanctioned for such use. In the interim 20 years, there have been bills passed at the state level that clarify the provisions of that act, and then this year, or last year, in 2015, there were three bills that were passed that have been titled the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act. And County Counsel is here. If you have questions about those bills, essentially what the state is now doing is setting up a set of regulations for the use of medical marijuana that requires permitting from the state, things like that. But one thing they did clarify in those bills is that local jurisdictions still have the right to regulate cultivation and distribution of marijuana, medical marijuana in their communities. As I mentioned before, Topeka County's zoning ordinance currently does not allow for cultivation or distribution of medical marijuana. And that is done through the principle of permissive zoning, which means that our ordinance has a provision that the use must be expressly allowed or a similar use allowed, or it's not. So in this particular case, our ordinance does not provide for such uses, so therefore, they are not allowed. They are prohibited at this time. However, in response to the bills that were passed by the legislature and signed by the governor this fall, the Board of Supervisors heard a presentation from County Counsel concerning some changes based upon the new law and some deadlines for local jurisdictions to adopt regulations or the use and cultivation of medical marijuana would be just subject to state law. So that's one of the reasons we're here tonight, because the Board of Supervisors directed County Counsel to prepare an ordinance. And the ordinance entails an amendment to the zoning ordinance. As you know, your commission reviews and considers changes to the zoning ordinance, and that's why we're here tonight. In making that direction to Counsel, the Board of Supervisors did recognize the need for patients in the county to have access to medical marijuana, and they did want to provide for a reasonable number of plants that could be grown by people who do need them, either by the patients themselves or their caregivers. But they also want an ordinance that would address public nuisances that are associated with cultivation of medical marijuana. Those include disagreeable odors, violations of building codes when grows are done inside, a risk of burglary and other property crimes, acts of violence, those types of things that have been happening in our county and for which our Sheriff's Department and the Community Resources Agency have received complaints. So again, the intent of the ordinance is to address those issues, but again, allow for reasonable cultivation of marijuana. Another issue that the Board directed is that, just like two years ago, there are several ballot measures that are being circulated right now that would not address this medical marijuana, but also recreational use of marijuana. Those ballot measures, if they do qualify for the November election, could affect any ordinance that is adopted by the Board of Supervisors. So while the Board directed that this ordinance be pursued at this time, they also have created a task force, which again, remember, two years ago, you suggested that, your commission. But the task force won't meet until after the ballot measure deadline, which is June 30th, for the Secretary of State to determine which measures of any do qualify. So I think the best way to really think about this ordinance, this may be an interim step. However, it may be the final step as well, depending on the outcome of those petitions for ballot measures. So the ordinance before you this evening that has been drafted by County Counsel was considered by the Board of Supervisors on January 5th, and the Board at that time referred it to your commission for tonight's public hearing. To summarize the provisions in the ordinance, it would add a new Chapter 17.67 to the zoning ordinance. It would allow cultivation of up to six medical marijuana plants on a parcel when there's one qualified patient or one primary caregiver that resides on the parcel. Cultivation would be allowed for up to 12 plants when there are two or more qualified patients or caregivers on the parcel. The cultivation could be indoors or outdoors. The cultivation cannot occur within 1,000 feet of any school, school evacuation site, place of worship, public park, licensed daycare home or daycare center, or the youth-oriented facility. An individual who is a tenant, for example, or is not the owner of a parcel, must obtain permission from the owner of the parcel in order to cultivate marijuana. And finally, all outdoor cultivation must be fully enclosed by an opaque fence, at least six feet in height, and must be set back a minimum of 50 feet from the boundaries of the parcel upon which the cultivation is located. These provisions are essentially the same as those that are currently in effect in Mariposa County. And our county line between Mariposa and Topeka County splits the Lake Don Pedro community, and we have heard from people in Lake Don Pedro that have concerns about cultivation in their community and the fact that they felt that the Mariposa County ordinance had been effective on that side of the county line. The primary difference between the two ordinances is that Mariposa does allow 12 plants for one patient and then 24 for two or more. So that is the primary difference. And finally, this ordinance- And finally, this ordinance would also address enforcement. Enforcement would be the responsibility of the co-compliance officer, who is currently our chief building official, with assistance from the county sheriff. The sheriff's responsibility would be, is one of protection, to escort the co-compliance staff out to these sites. Because again, there have been problems in the past with cultivation of medical marijuana, and we want to make sure that any staff who are charged with enforcement can do it in a safe manner. One of the issues that you may hear tonight is that six plants are not enough. I just want to mention that our county health officer, Dr. Liza Ortiz, has stated that medical marijuana is readily available. If you don't want to grow it yourself, or you don't feel that six plants is enough, you can certainly purchase it through dispensaries. There are many located in neighboring counties. You can also order it over the internet or by telephone and have it delivered. This ordinance does not affect the ability of some, these dispensaries, to deliver to patients in Tuolumne County. With that, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, that concludes my presentation. But I would like to mention that we have Deputy County Council Carlin Dribdal here, who did draft the ordinance. We have County Council Sarah Correo here. We have Under Sheriff Bill Puli. And we have Eric, are you a lieutenant? Tenet. Eric Erhart from the sheriff's department, who is very, very knowledgeable about responding to these medical marijuana complaints. So with that, we have to answer questions you might have. You're right. Oh, excuse me, I have one more. You received this evening, and you'd also previously received an email from Sally Miller from the Lake Don Pedro community. And as I mentioned, she has presented us with photographs of a grow that did occur in the Lake Don Pedro community. And I would certainly invite you to take a look at the photographs that she has given us and that are posted on the wall. She cannot be here this evening to make a presentation to your commission, but you have received her email, which outlines her concerns.
Ms. Shane, this ordinance, it makes dispensaries moot, correct?
It does not allow dispensaries in Tuolumne County.
That's what I mean. There's nothing in there that allows dispensaries.
It does not allow them. So that would continue under our current zoning ordinance prohibition for dispensaries.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, questions of the commission for staff?
One.
Gary?
On your agenda report, page 8, item 20, having to do with the enforcement, it sounds like the same kind of enforcement of any other code compliance problem. You know, if you have, people have too many cars in the garage, too many cars out in their front yard. They call you and say, "We got too many cars out in the front yard," and you go deal with it. Obviously, it's got a little different angle. Is it completely complaint-driven like that is? I mean, if nobody complains on the rest of your code compliance stuff, nothing happens. Is this the same kind of a thing, or how does it differ?
I'm going to allow council to address this because code compliance provisions are in chapter 110 of the ordinance code, which do not come before you. We, council has drafted some change modifications to the code compliance ordinance to address this new provision of the zoning ordinance.
Good evening. Deputy County Council Carlin Dribdal. Yes, you are correct that this provision is slightly different. Normally, under Title 17, the enforcement is the Community Resources Agency. Now, that is done through the code compliance process in chapter 110. However, this was, the board directed this to be specifically handled by the code compliance officer with support from the sheriff's office. It would be handled through the code compliance chapter, which is complaint-driven. So if there's not a complaint submitted, then I assure you that Doug does not have the time to go out looking for things.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah. Peter?
Kind of on that same point, I understand the board made that decision. That was the direction they're giving. Was there a reason why they chose this as opposed to the sheriff? I'm just more curious.
Yes, some of the, Sarah Correo, County Council. Some of the discussion at the board level obviously was whether or not the sheriff's office should take the lead. However, when the sheriff's office takes the lead in a civil administrative matter, the burden changes, the legal burden changes. It becomes much higher. So the board ultimately decided it would be better to allow code enforcement to take the lead, meaning all of the burdens that we're used to dealing with, the appeal process, it still goes to the board supervisors for appeal. That remains the same, so we kind of keep it in the civil arena. And there's also some case law about not making this code process. It is not criminal, so we want to ensure that distinction. It is a civil process. So that is ultimately why they decided to take that action.
I have another question, if I may. I noticed in here that one of the provisions is a six-foot opaque fence. Having lived for 22 years in Humboldt County, I've seen a few plants. They're going to grow higher than six feet, in most cases. Is there a reason why at six feet is not opposed to something higher? I mean, if it's trying to shield it, eventually that won't work.
Six feet was chosen because that's what Mariposa did. Again, to be perfectly frank, we took the regulations of our neighboring county, that we had evidence that it was working well. The board wanted regulations put in place that allowed a small amount of cultivation, which is why we used Mariposa's ordinance as a base. The idea being, again, when the task force starts its work after the ballot measures, if there are those types of issues, those can be addressed at that time.
And it would then be consistent in Don Pedro, I imagine, because it's going to be the same on both sides.
At this point, it will be the same in both sides, yes.
My last question. What effect on Ms. Miller's concerns will this ordinance have? I understand her concern. I read her letter, and I, there's a lot of, you know, understanding of why she's upset. But if I understand it, it won't necessarily go after an illegal grow, or will it?
It gives us more tools to address, as in, you are violating this section of our ordinance code.
Oh, so there's a written component in there that you could cite?
Correct. For example, the grow that Ms. Miller was complaining about was on a vacant lot. And one of the requirements of the ordinance is, if you're going to grow, you need to live there.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, we'll go to the public hearing. Can I have a show of hands how many folks would like to address the commission, so we can set time? Okay. Yeah, I think three minutes apiece ought to be able to cover your points, I think. So we've got a magic clock over there. Which should be big enough for everybody to see. Even some of us are glad. So again, it's a formal public hearing. Start out with those who are in favor of the ordinance, followed by those who are opposed to the ordinance, followed by those who would just like to speak neutrally, and then opportunities for rebuttal and surrebuttal. Only those who have commented either for or against are entitled to make the rebuttal or surrebuttal. I think, I hope that's all clear. So with that, we'll start out. Three-minute time limit. Folks, welcome to come forward and address the commission who are in favor of the ordinance. Ooh, okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, my name is Tom Johnson. I hope the two members that are not present has seen these pictures. I wished all of you was my neighbor. This is my neighbor.
You're fading away.
I am not against.
You're fading a little bit, so make sure you're close.
Okay, thank you.
And speak up.
I am not against the small grows for the people that have a card. I like it that they grow it on their own property. And six plants is sufficient, because things get out of hand. What I'm against is the large grows. What you see here in these pictures. Get my glasses on here. Okay, the large grow problems. They claim to be farmers. They are not farmers. Farmers don't do this to their property, and others. I'm getting tired of picking up fertilizer sacks that are blowing around. That fertilizer is still in the ground. Luckily, now we are getting water. That water is going right into Lake Don Pedro. I wonder if San Francisco realizes that they're drinking a byproduct of that fertilizer. They have been caught stealing water up there. Because of armed guards over these grows, the people that they were stealing from are afraid to report it and just eat it. This is wrong. There's an equestrian trail by my house. I always get up in the morning and would walk that. I do not do that anymore, because I go within 10 feet of their plants. And there's an armed guard there. How safe is this? At the end of the grow season, I sit there in my bedroom 100 yards from the grow, and I smell this, this stench. My eyes burn. That's what I'm dealing with. That's about all I have. I just wish that all of you was my neighbor. We are 45 minutes from any police response over there. There has been shots fired over there, and I take that as a warning to me to stay the hell away. I don't want to deal with this. I've talked to the sheriff. I'm about ready to get my carry permit, and we got to do something. Also, the school kids.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Time's up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to comment in favor of the proposed ordinance?
Good evening. My name is Ruth Smith, and I'm also from Don Pedro. I'm, my name is Ruth Smith, and I'm also from Don Pedro. And Mr. Johnson covered a lot of the issues that I was going to cover. I do have a neighbor that his property butts up to this, to this last grow. And he was told by the sheriff to stay off of the back of your property. Don't go down there. That's pretty bad, when we have property and we're not allowed to even go on the back of our property. These fellows that, that stay on this property, they camp under the oak trees, or a tent, or whatever they have. There's no septic system. We've called the health department. We've called everyone about this, asked to no help. A lot of the, when the sheriff comes out, they're afraid to go down, because these people are armed. They have not shot at anyone that I'm aware of yet. But they shoot, letting you know that they are armed. And we've had home invasions in our area, and also in Calaveras. You know about the problem that they had there. Also, in tonight's paper, Modesto, Stanislaw County, is also tightening their ordinance before March, March the 1st. And it was in tonight's paper. And it's, we don't have a problem with the people that have a few plants growing for their medical marijuana, if they, if they need it, and it's legal. But these 250 plants are not medical marijuana, and it's not legal. And we're, we're in fear. We have schools around our area. We have pedestrian and equestrian trails. And when you can't walk these or enjoy your own property, it's getting pretty sad. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else wish to comment in favor of the ordinance? Yes, sir.
My name is Dan Hankmeyer, and I, I just wanted to get a clarification on why this would be, if, why the state ruling would make this.
Address your questions, commission.
Why the state ruling would make this, we would have to do a new ruling? What was the reason for that?
Okay, Carolyn, Sarah?
Sure. So when the three, when the three bills passed, they came into effect January 1st. And there is a provision in the legislation that says if there is not an ordinance on the books, if a local jurisdiction doesn't have an ordinance on the books regarding cultivation by March 1st, the state regulations basically take over. The state preamps the local jurisdiction. Now, there is efforts in the legislature to repeal that March 1st deadline, but as of today, it stands. So that's why you see a lot of jurisdictions, not just Tuolumne County, taking efforts to address cultivation.
So it seems to me, then, that this wouldn't have to be redone if the state came through with its, with its ruling.
Well, I think it would depend on the initiatives a year from now. Could change the whole, whole game, we don't know.
Okay, well, the other thing is that, you know, these growers, this guy here, I'm sure that he wasn't paying any taxes. I mean, this is all cash. And my, my concern is, you know, if these guys are going to grow this stuff, they need to pay taxes, and I'd like to make sure that somebody's going to make sure that that's happened. The other thing is, you know, these school kids walk by this, and they think it's kind of funny. And they, and, but it's not funny, because these people, these people have weapons. And they make sure that that, that stuff is not being bothered. So the kids are somewhat in danger as well. So I just want to make sure. Also, my, my other, my other question is too. The sheriff, the sheriff is not responsible for enforcing this. So who are we going to call, then, to make sure this is enforced?
Code enforcement, right?
That would be code compliance, yes.
Code, code compliance. It's in the phone book.
Okay, but I'm not, I'm not convinced that code compliance will do the same thing that the sheriff will do. I'm sorry?
Just stay with, stay with the commission. Yeah, well, if you heard staff report why, if it's a, there's going to be a real issue out there, why there would be a deputy sheriff along with the code enforcer.
All right.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
See how it works.
I, I am in favor of the resolution, by the way. Thank you.
Okay, Peter?
A couple of times, we've alluded to the state regulations would take effect if there's no ordinance. What would those state regulations do? I don't understand what, what the default position is here. I guess the better question is, how would it differ from what we're being asked to review?
The, the new legislation has tasks, tasked various state agencies with a, to develop regulations regarding cultivation. So at this point, there are none. They're, they're supposed to have that in place by January 1st, 2018.
So there would be really no answer in the meantime, then?
Right, there are certain personal grow requirements that we could, I could find for you.
That's okay, I think that answered the question.
And essentially, just so you know, I was at the state assembly yesterday on this issue, and heard from the three of the state agencies that are supposed to be developing these regulations, Department of Food and Ag, Health, and just Department of Consumer Affairs. They essentially all said that the timeframe of January 1st, 2018 is, it's very unlikely they're going to have their regulations in place. So essentially, we'd be waiting even longer than that deadline.
Thank you, that helps.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Dan Johnson. I'm also from Lake Don Pedro. And my question is, without this ordinance, if one of my neighbors is hurt after you've been notified of these violations of, of these pictures and things like that, what liability does the county have for protecting the residents in this situation? Because you have been notified numerous times, and there's evidence that it is illegal, and now you have an action before you to do something. If you don't act, who's liable for the safety and welfare of our communities?
I'll turn that over to our legal counsel.
I know it's a challenging question, and you're smiling. So, but we're talking about a serious situation.
And I absolutely understand that, because I've been in contact with Ms. Miller several times about the, the Don Pedro issue. And I, and I don't want to make light of it, because I understand the seriousness of it. But in terms of county liability, really, if something were to happen where somebody who is down who is down there conducting, you know, illegal activity and harms a resident, that's a criminal case and that goes in the criminal arena. That's not something that the county in a civil matter would necessarily be involved in. But that's one of the reasons that we are trying to put forth an ordinance and come up with a process with code compliance and sheriff working together to help prevent that kind of a situation.
Well, I hope, I hope the council does move forward in support of this ordinance because just think about it, if it was in your backyard. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in favor of the proposed ordinance? Okay, we'll close that part. We'll go to those who would like to speak in opposition to the ordinance. You can, might as well line up along the wall there and that way you save time coming up. Yes, sir, you're first.
Hello, my name's Brian. I'm a local patient and grower. I'd like to start by saying I'm really sorry for you guys dealing with this. I wouldn't want that behind my house either and I'm, I'm a medical grower, so I don't think any patients, legitimate patients, want this happening.
I'm not able to hear this speaker.
Sorry, I'm trying to speak up. None of us want this happening either and I actually agree with the ordinance. I have some problems with it. There's no sunset date set, as far as I know, on the current ordinance that's being suggested. I like Mariposa's rules. If we have to deal with them for the next three years, that might be a little hard for us, but I don't like having the numbers to six instead of 12. There's no differentiation made between indoor and outdoor growing. Indoor plants, it's very difficult to get what we need per year with just six plants. Also outside, if you're limited to six plants as, Peter, Peter, yeah, as you said, plants get taller than six feet. So a six-foot opaque fence would probably be more effective with 12 small plants than six really big plants. We're going to grow them as big as we need to get what we need for the year. So that's something to think about. Just throwing that out there. And yeah, I just request that, don't be hasty, residents of Don Pedro to-
Address the commission, not the audience.
I'm sorry. Please don't be hasty to, to make this our issue. We don't have anything to do with these people growing this massive amounts of plants illegally, camping under trees. That's not us. I feel like the medical community is kind of being singled out here when we, that's an illegal activity, obviously. Everyone, everyone in the room can see that. So that's not what I'm doing at my house. I'm really respectful of my neighbors and I don't do anything over six anyway, so, but yeah, I guess that's all I needed to say. Thank you all. I really appreciate the civic processes going on here, too. I love, I love the openness of the conversation, so thank you all.
Thank you for commenting. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Lauren Hurley and I'm here, I'm in favor and opposition both, so I just wanted to give you a couple of points. First of all, I wanted to say to the residents of, I wanted to say to the residents of Don Pedro that this isn't a normal grove of a medical marijuana patient. This is not the norm. This is not what we want in the county. We want to see good regulation. We want to see people who are responsible for what they're doing, you know, clean, healthy, growing, you know? That's what we are. We're an agricultural county. So I don't want to see medical growing limited because of the view of growing in general. These type of grows aren't cool that we're looking at over here. There does need to be enforcement. So I don't want, I don't think looking at these and making your regulations by these grows is, is a great choice. I do like the, looking at Mariposa, I think it's a good idea to go with, to follow what they're doing. I'm not exactly sure why you're not going with the numbers. I think their numbers are more realistic. Some of the regulations you're looking at, the setbacks, the 50 feet, that's going to make it impossible for some patients to grow at all. So co-op-ing is going to be more important. Having one, two, three, four, maybe six patients on, on property is going to be more common and more necessary if you're going to want these limitations on smaller, smaller parcels, you know, with, with the fences, with the setbacks. I'm not saying they're unrealistic. I think if you're going to look for those, you have to also allow for the other things that are going to come up because of these regulations. So the co-op-ing is, you know, what I'm talking about there. Other than that, you know, I'm, I'm glad that you guys are looking at this, talking about it. I hope you're having very open minds as to where the whole state and the, the whole nation is going with cannabis. There probably are going to be sometime soon, legal, big grows in this county. There should be. We're ag. We have grapes. We have olives. We have, we have everything. So if we're going to say we can't allow responsible grows in this county, larger responsible grows, I think that's not very forward-thinking tax revenue-wise or really just community-wise. So those are some points I'd like for you to think of and I thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is John Simonian. First off, I'd like to apologize to these folks who have to deal with this. I don't do that and I don't think anybody in this room does that. That's illegal. None of us are going to argue that, okay? They're not respecting the environment. They're not respecting the law. This ordinance is too much. The plant number, like council said, we're all going to complain about the plant number. The plant number is too small. I cannot grow enough for myself and my wife with six plants or the total of 12 plants that'll last me a year. So then I'm forced to grow inside. Do you folks know that a much, how much electricity is being used in the state growing marijuana? The estimate is per year, a million households could be lit with the power being used growing inside. Think about the environmental consequences of that, okay? That is something you're not thinking about. There's also costs of growing indoors. It costs, your electricity bill's going way up. You have to buy special lights. You have to buy special equipment. And then you have to dedicate a space in your house to grow inside. You have fire hazards. You put more people in danger doing that than any other way that you, that you can grow. The sun is free. We're an agricultural county. You know, I feel for these people here walking around. Why is the sheriff's department not doing something to walk around with a gun and a pot, and a pot batch, okay? That kind of makes us, that makes me upset, but I don't want to waste my time. I think that there is some ordinances coming out that you're asking about, Peter. The state, the state fallback position is the way I understand it, is going to be 100 square feet of canopy, okay? Not square footage on the ground, but of canopy. There will be no plant count and it will be a maximum of five people per co-op, okay? That's where I believe the regulation is going towards. And that was already a compromised position. So for us to bring that compromised position and lessen it even more down to six plants and 12 total in a household, I, I can't do it. I've had to give my medical records to this county for the county doctor to look at it. The county doctor sent my medical records to the state. The state looked at it. The state issued me a state card. They saw my plant numbers. Nope, I've been going to the same doctor for 20 years. My health has gotten worse and worse as it goes. I smoke more and more as it goes. I would like you to at least go back to either the default of the state, I think is a reasonable number, but Mariposa's at 12 and 24 is at least something we could live with.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
If you were writing the ordinance, how many plants would you have per person? You don't like six. What, what's the right number?
You know, here's the problem, sir, is that anything agricultural is so hard that you could have a good year and a bad year.
Yeah, I understand.
And here's the way I think that one should look at it, who's, if you've never, I'm presuming none of you have ever grown any weed, okay? But maybe you've grown tomatoes. You've grown tomatoes, maybe, okay? Or your neighbor's grown tomatoes. Can you grow enough tomatoes with six plants to last you a year if you ate tomatoes every day? That's an analogy that I think we can all-
Okay, well, I guess I'm not going to get a number, so-
I think the 12 and, the 12 and 24 is a, is a better compromised position.
Okay.
Okay, and I think-
Thank you.
That we should have a four, like this lady was saying, a four-person household, whatever you want to do, a maximum of four scripts per household.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Thank you. My name is Jesse Kraft. I'm a resident and I'm 26 years, local contractor and a member of Americans for Safe Access. I just wanted to let you know that the problems you're having here are a direct result of the lack of regulation that the county has, has not taken any action on. And so as a member of Americans for Safe Access, I bring you today a packet of information that is offered by Americans for Safe Access to help communities like ours bring sensible regulations to the medical cannabis industry. And this information will help guide the industry professionals. It'll help the cannabis advocates, the patients, the concerned citizens such as these folks and you as policymakers to work together to create the best possible choice on regulating medical cannabis in our community. And I would also like this information that I have here, it's quite a bit, to be forwarded to the ad hoc committee that's supposed to form later this year, if I'm understanding that right. So I was hoping I could give this information to somebody and that they could make some copies and everybody-
You're in with that nice lady there.
I would have made more copies, but my printer would have died after that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Hello, everybody. So I've been a resident of this county since the year 2000. I'm a taxpay citizen. I'm a grower. I'm a cancer patient, among other things. Really quick, I'd like to apologize also to the residents of Don Pedro. This isn't us, definitely. This is your cartels, your micro-mafias. This is everybody coming up here. They're not taxpayers. They're stealing, yes. They're definitely stealing, okay? I pay my water bill. I pay my power bill. I support local business by buying all my products in this county. All that, you know, Lowe's, yeah, it's a big corporation. I still support it here. The hydroponic store in town, I still support it here. Everything, you know? I buy all my equipment and everything here. My biggest concern on this is regulations are a good thing, okay? Because some people will go out of hand with their growing. You need to be able to regulate indoor and outdoor. I cannot stress that a mu, like enough. I mean, outdoor, your plants, you even said, you know, you lived in Humboldt, you saw these plants getting 10 feet high. You know, I have pictures of me standing next to one of my friend's plants like this and it's past my head, okay? Indoors, your plants, maybe this. I grow in two-gallon pots, okay? So you're limiting me six plants? That's one branch on one of these outdoor plants. They, these guys get outdoors anywhere from one plant, you can get anywhere from one to 10 pounds, depending on how big you grow it. It's easy. I've seen it and it, everybody sees it. It's, it happens. So indoors, one to two ounces per plant, okay? And yes, there's cycles for indoors, but still, no matter what I do, if I'm lucky, if I can do four cycles in a year, I still don't get what these guys can get off of two plants total. So I need to stress, you said something about a number. How about this? Indoor, 10 by 10. Go back to a 10 by 10 square foot area. That's one, that's a normal-sized bedroom. A normal-sized bedroom's actually about a 12 by 15. So you go to something like that, you got to factor in for a water tank, equipment, place, everything needs a place. But the actual square footage for the plants, they don't really take up that much room when you're doing indoor. But six plants is not enough. I mean, I cannot stress that. I smoked that in a month. I'm sorry. Six plants, I mean, that's nothing. Sometimes when the pain's really bad, probably even more. But you need to have a better regulation indoor for outdoor. Outdoor, go back to where it used to be back in the day. 12 plants outdoor, that is fine. 12 plants per script, that is perfectly okay. These guys can do what they can do. Indoors, though, go back to a square footage size, not numbers of plants. That will work a lot better and you'll make a lot more indoor growers happy. Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to address the commission on the ordinance?
Can I come back and ask?
Oh, yes, sir. Could you come back? We got a question.
Some technical, you know, you've spoken more technically than everybody else. Maybe you know, know more than everybody else does, but you, you made the mistake of sounding, sounding technical. With, with, you know, one of the things, we looked at this before, was the massive amounts of power that get consumed in order to have the right kind of light, right?
I'm looking into solar.
Yeah, with, with, with all of the change to LED lighting and that kind of thing, does that create the wavelengths and things you need to be able to do this?
Okay, LED, yeah, there's a new form of a lot of growing coming out with LED lighting. It's not as efficient as these HUD lighting. HUD takes up a lot of power, yes. You know, you have 400 watts, 600 watt, 1200 watt, you know, 1,000 watt. They take up a lot. Basically, you figure, if you want to do math, every 1,000 watts that I spend is about $50 a month in power. That's about a regular heater. Actually, your heaters are about 1,500 watts. So you're spending about $75 a month powering that heater, okay? A lot of these times, you got to figure, too, there's hours. Your veg cycle is a lot longer. You're doing an 18 hours on, six hours off. So you're on for a long time when you're vegging, but you don't veg for that long. You grow your plants to a certain size. It may me, takes me about a week to get to this. Then you switch over to a 12 and 12 cycle. So you're on for 12 hours, off for 12 hours. During that off for 12 hours, I'm not using any power. I've got maybe a dehumidifier that helps keep the room and the temperatures right, but I'm not using power. I have, because of, yes, my power bills are pretty high, but doesn't the county also get a percentage of taxes from our power? I mean, so that also helps with county revenue, correct? Okay, so also, there's another thing, too. I mean, I was, like I said, I was looking into solar because, yes, it's very expensive and there's more regulations coming out on solar because a lot of people are seeing this, too, that solar is the way to go. I mean, it's, if we can have better ordinances for this county to be able to help people get solar, then I think you'll see a lot more people switch to that. Yeah, you know, we're trying to save as much energy as possible. I do a recycling water system. I don't use that much water. I live alone. I probably use less water than like a standard four, you know, family home, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Hi, everyone. Kira Tucker. I am the administrator for Twomey Cannabis Advocacy. I want to reiterate a few things. The numbers are an issue. I think the Mariposa numbers are what this draft ordinance process started off as and the unknown to me, the ad hoc community or committee that was put together, came up with the six and 12 as a compromise between the three and six, which was the original proposed number. I also have an issue with there being no sunset. We've, we've heard about the sunset time. It's been presented by the board in the last meeting, but throughout the entire draft ordinance, there is no actual date. In order to incentivize bridging the gap between the farmer's side of the fence and the rest of the community and rebuilding a sense of trust, I think it would be important to include that date. Additionally, I feel the, the working committee, yet to be chosen to draft a more refined ordinance, should have that date as a goal. It should be written down somewhere. I'm also concerned that there is still no provision for dispensaries, not just for safe access, but to help the, the county pay for enforcement, to collect sales tax on the medicine because that is the only point in, whether you're following the state guidelines or some kind of mashed-together interim ordinance guidelines, that is the only point at which the county can collect tax on cannabis. That can then be divided and funneled back into the coffers to deal with those guys. And I'd like to say, as has been said before, not all farmers are like that. And my sympathies to the citizens of Don Pedro. We don't farm like that. We don't want to farm like that. We want to be regulated. We want to have rigorous, transparent regulation. We want to pay our taxes. We want to come out of the shadows. We want to be considered a part of the community and contribute and we're here to, to help and be a part of this process. And we're here to help and be a part of this process. So thank you. And thank you, County Council, for all your work that you've done on trying to get this figured out.
I have a question.
Do you have a question, I think?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned, and one of the other speakers did, to the lack of a sunset date. Given that we're all expecting some sort of an initiative process, probably in November, from what I understand, what would make sense to you in that environment as a sunset date?
I would actually ask County Council for their advice on that.
Speak up a little bit for our folks.
Well, the intent for the working group is to start probably in June with really going through some more detailed regulations related to personal cultivation. I don't, we're not sure if the board is going to also include in that distribution, but certainly some cultivation. In order for the working group to get together and really have a well-thought-out process, I would think you would need, you know, six months to a year to be realistic. I mean, really, you have a lot of different people getting together and trying to go through this, really make it detailed and well-thought-out. So any shorter timeframe is just not going to do it justice. And I think that we had, Mr. Vidal would like to address that actual including a sunset provision, because we don't recommend that part of it.
So for sunset, the idea being, once the working group comes forward with a recommendation, they would present it to the board, then we would go through this process again, where that recommended ordinance would come to the planning commission and, in essence, replace this ordinance. So the working group's outcome is going to be what replaces this ordinance. If we had a sunset provision in there and, let's say, we were unable to finish the work in that time, then, and the ordinance was gone, then, in essence, we'd be going back to where we are right now, which is where cultivation and distribution are banned under the principles of permissive zoning. So it would be a step back. And in the discussion on November 17th with the board, they were very interested in allowing some amount of personal cultivation now, rather than waiting until the working group could work through all the problems and all the various issues. And so this is the temporary thing. It's intended to, depending on what comes out of that working group, just be in place that, at this point, at this point, you're not supposed to have any plants. But if this passes, then we will have 6 and there will be allowed some amount of personal cultivation.
Okay.
Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you very much, County Council. And thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in opposition? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Tom Taylor. I have been a resident of this county for 30 years. I appreciate there's a public process going on. I think this is really good. In order to prepare ourselves for what's coming down the road, we have to start having these conversations. My biggest concerns about the ordinance that we're currently considering is the number of plants and lack of differentiation between indoor and outdoor and the 50-foot distance from the property line. I feel that these create a lot of issues in terms of access for small home growers based on socioeconomic status. I don't think that people should be limited based on what size their property is, how much they can afford in terms of growing indoor, in order to have access to their healthcare.
Thank you. Anybody else? Now we'll go to rebuttal. Anybody that testified in?
Neutral.
Oh, neutral. I'll bet we don't have any neutrals.
Just for the process.
Anyway, either it's a neutral. Yes, we have a neutral. Good. Thank you for that call.
Well, since you made such a big deal out of it, I'll try to be neutral. I've been at all the public hearings, and the first public hearing I saw to the second public hearing, when a great many participants in the medical marijuana process showed up, I saw a huge shift in the thinking, which I found kind of rewarding. And we have some very articulate, very well-informed participants in the medical marijuana community that have showed up and really participated in the debate and really contributed a lot, I thought. So when they were talking about this task force, I thought the task force should start now, so you could have this discussion with all these participants and be prepared, rather than waiting until June. But listening to everybody here, I'm kind of thinking maybe the 12 and 24 would be a good idea. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other neutrals? Okay, don't see any. Now, we'll go to rebuttal. Only those who commented in favor of it are eligible to take place in the rebuttal of those who are opposed to it. Anybody wish to take part in rebuttal? Okay, don't see anybody. In that case, there's no sir rebuttal, and with that, this public hearing is closed. And with that, we bring the matter back to the board.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There were a number of comments about the numbers and asking where they came from. I can shed some light on that if that would be helpful.
Yeah, sure. That's a question we had, yeah.
Okay. So at the November 17th board meeting, there was, again, a lot of discussion about, do we send this to the working group right now, or do we get something in place in the interim until the working group is able to get started? So the board tasked supervisors Brennan and Royce to work with staff to develop this ordinance, and that is what we presented to the board again on January 5th. In terms of those numbers, the 6 and 12, given the wide range of residential parcels sizes in the county, we're talking from 2,600 square feet to hundreds of acres. These plant limits were determined to be an appropriate initial balance between patient access and impacts to neighboring properties. Again, pending additional consideration by the larger medical marijuana working group. These numbers are also in line with similar marijuana cultivation regulations in other California jurisdictions. Again, this was intended as the starting point, the initial point. And in the larger working group, those issues about how to deal with small parcels and the like can be worked out.
You know, when it comes to mine, remember a year or so ago, we talked about the number of chickens you could have on your property?
Yeah, I do.
And if it was a small lot, you could have one or two chickens, I don't know. If you had a big lot, you know, there's a sliding scale. I don't know, is that, I don't want to complicate this thing.
Are you suggesting the chickens have come home?
Well, maybe the chickens are like the marijuana, I know. But anyway, but on, one thing I think we've all learned tonight is, there's a tremendous difference between growing cannabis inside and outside.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, huge, a huge difference if the descriptions are halfway accurate. I mean, like 6 to 1 or 10 to 1, I don't know what they are. And it also, I also recall two years ago, when we had a mob here talking, remember that original, that original ordinance was going to limit growing to indoors?
That's correct.
I remember, right?
That is correct.
And I sure got convinced that that wasn't going to work, because of the power bills and all the hazards and so on and so forth. At the time, it sounded, yeah, that's a real solution, but, and again, here tonight, we heard, you just can't produce inside like you can outside, even if you throw a lot of money at it. I'm still concerned on, you know, how many plants does it really take? If you had six big plants outside, you know, would that cover somebody for a year? I don't, Lieutenant, you're Mr. Cannabis in the County or something. Do you have any sense of what the right number should be to supply a person? Of course, there's persons that are very sick and those not quite so sick, and, so I don't know. Deal with it.
So just to give you a little background on who I am, Lieutenant Eric Hart with the Sheriff's Office, I've been there for about 15 years. I spent over four years working strictly narcotics. I've testified in court as an expert several times. I've even had defense experts get up and validate my testimony following that, in those cases. So I've talked to hundreds of patients, I've talked to, you know, numerous people that use, that stay within the guidelines of, or the intent of the law when it originally came out, and also those that abuse it. So when we talk about how many plants is really necessary, like one person said, you can get anywhere from a pound up to 10 pounds, depending on how good you are at growing it. So really, it depends upon usage. You know, if you're growing plants that are producing 10 pounds each, you don't need six plants for, to get you through the year. You know, you're talking 60 pounds of marijuana, and when you break that down into marijuana cigarettes, that typically ranging from a half a gram to a gram for a marijuana cigarette, you're not smoking an entire pack of those a day. So that's a good comparison I like to use, so people try to estimate how much a half a gram or a gram would be. You think about a typical cigarette. The effects of marijuana can last anywhere from, you know, two to six, eight hours, depending upon the quality, the quantity that you're smoking. And so people aren't typically dosing every hour or every couple hours or every single day, especially if they're working, obviously. So there's a lot of variables that are involved in it. So to have a hard number to go off is very difficult. That's why we try to find a balance that's going to work for everybody.
Any questions, Lieutenant?
Yes, please.
Yes, go ahead.
Could someone please talk to me about the growth cycle? From the beginning to the final product? What kind of time are we looking at, please?
Again, it varies whether you're growing indoors or outdoor. When you grow indoors, you have the benefit of be able to control your environment. You can adjust the time. As you shorten the light cycles, the plant will start producing the THC at that point. So that's why he was talking about going to a 12/12 cycle. And when he switches over from an 18-hour to a 12-hour cycle, then he starts producing THC at that point. Yeah, essentially, you're getting the female plant to try to attract more male plants, but you keep the male plants out of the area. And so it starts producing more THC to try to attract more. So, and again, that's why they control the light. So if you're growing indoors, you can shorten it down to 60 days. If you're growing outdoors, you can grow anywhere from 90 to 120 days. Again, you have a stage where the plant is, either you're cloning or you're growing it from seed, you have a vegetative, and then you have a flowering state where it starts producing that THC and producing the usable product, typically the bud that they refer to.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Question, you have, Peter?
I guess, after listening, I'm a little sensitive to the last speaker who made a point that depending on how much property you have, that 50-foot setback is an issue. I'm aware that the county, after working here for 12 years, has some differences in certain ordinances based on parcel size. There are certain things you can do with the two-acre parcel that you can't do with something smaller, et cetera. Would it make any sense to try to revise that for smaller parcels? I recognize that no matter what you do, you can't figure out all possible combinations. But it sure seems like if somebody has a quarter-acre lot, they're going to have a hard time getting 50-foot setback anywhere.
Yes.
And so I understand that, and I imagine that some of the folks that are ill probably aren't making a ton of money. So again, that would play toward a smaller parcel or renting, which, again, I'm trying to figure out if there's a way to address that fairly, while at the same time throwing out your whole effort of work.
Again, those are issues that we expect the larger working group to be addressing. Actually, I think the chicken ordinance is an excellent comparison in that for a very small lot, you're going to have a smaller number of chickens allowed. I want to encourage you to remember this is a land use ordinance, and what we're looking at is also impacts to neighboring properties and what would be involved in that, so.
And I also want to address the fact that we've met with the board of supervisors three times on this issue. The shortest meeting was, I believe, probably three hours long. So you can, a lot of these issues have absolutely been discussed with them, and that is why this is such a complex issue. It's not easy. And that's one of the reasons, and I believe it was Supervisor Royce, that tried to come up with a draft ordinance on the dais to address some of those issues. And ultimately, it was decided, you know what? It is so complicated, we have to take the time to really dig into these issues and figure out what's fair and what's appropriate to address, not just people that want to grow, but also neighbors. So that is why we came forward. And I also want to make it clear, we can't take credit for drafting the ordinance. This is something that supervisors Brennan and Royce, you know, created, that we, yes, put into draft form. But absolutely, those issues need to be addressed, but it's going to take some time. So in order to meet the deadline that we're trying to meet, we, that's why we're recommending this proposed ordinance.
Okay, but wouldn't it also be true that if it takes a while to do that, you're going to create a situation where if someone with a larger parcel has no limitation, other than the 50 feet, and the 6 and 12 plants or whatever, they can do what they want to do, in other words? And somebody who has a smaller parcel will still be prevented if they don't have a 50-foot setback? I mean, you're going to have winners and losers there.
From the outdoor perspective, that's true, but certainly there could be the indoor grow and there could be access to mobile deliveries. So there, you know, again, this is interim, and it is so complicated. So that's part of this issue, that we're trying to move it forward so that we can get something on the books and then take the time to work through the process.
As always, if your commission in making your decision and recommendation of the board of supervisors can always suggest that that be one of the issues you specifically want the task force to look into, is maybe having a sliding scale or definitely look at setting different standards, perhaps, based upon parcel size, so that you don't disenfranchise someone with a very small parcel who would like to grow a little, few plants outdoors.
That's basically where I'm going.
Yeah. Good idea.
Yeah, go ahead, Jerry.
The, I think that there's a place that maybe there's something that can be done upfront, you know, in this round. Maybe it's too big a step, I don't know, but that's the indoor versus the outdoor part. In that, you know, the indoor piece, while it is fraught with all kinds of energy problems and all those kind of things, most of those, over time, are going to get, technology is going to help that, right? As light gets cheaper and solar gets more efficient. So from a neighbor's point of view, the way to not have any impact on your neighbors is the neighbors not even know that you're doing it, because it's all inside your doors. So at one level, it would be nice to encourage indoor use, if we could do it in such, you know, if we could believe that going down the road, that that's not going to be a terrible thing, because we're consuming tons of power. And I think that technology's going to get us there down the road. So I would wonder whether we would be better off to look at something saying, let's make the indoor piece a little more beneficial, you know? Most everybody's got a home, and most everybody's got 100 square feet, if we were to pick a number like that. And that levels the playing field a little bit. It seems like a relatively small modification if we said, if inside you do, you know, now there's probably unintended consequence here, I'd be anxious to hear what that unintended consequence is. But if you did something that kind of encouraged the indoor use of it a little bit, and therefore limit the amount of impact you have on people on the outside. Just so you know, we're past the public portion, so, you know, it's.
Now, if any member of the commission has a question for an individual, that member of the commission can call him up. But just as far as participating in this discussion, public hearing is closed.
I think I heard Peggy did.
Who didn't?
I thought I heard Peggy.
Peggy.
Yeah, Chairman Plant, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Somewhere in this packet, I was reading that there is a significant potential for a ballot measure this year. And my question is, if we pass this in some form or other, what happens if that ballot measure goes through? Does that undo the whole thing, or what?
Okay, the legal department can respond to that.
So we don't know the exact language of any ballot measure and what it would do. It is possible that, again, it would be focused on the recreational use of marijuana, and it is possible that it could remove certain powers that local governments have to regulate recreational use of marijuana. That's part of the reason why we're waiting to start the working group, so that when we are considering what the regulations are, we can hopefully couple medical marijuana and recreational marijuana, and we'll know what the regulations are, what likely to be. So it's unclear what would happen at that point.
Okay. So it would definitely, the ballot would definitely be recreational, as opposed to this one. to this one for medical.
Correct. It will be recreational. Medical marijuana is what we're talking about today that's already been approved by the governor.
You know...
Thank you.
We could tinker with this thing pretty easily, as has been pointed out. Instead of 50-foot, 25-foot. It's a temporary deal, anyway. 10 by 10, as somebody suggested, indoors. For a temporary ordinance, would that really be a bad thing to do?
I think if we start tinkering, we have to tinker selectively, because otherwise, the whole thing's going to kind of fall apart. But so if we picked a couple of things, and said, let's tinker with those couple of things, I would be willing to support that. I know that makes your lives miserable, but that's our job. That's what we're here for.
Scratch the number out.
We're not happy until you're not happy.
I tend to agree, Supervisor. I'm like, sorry, still think of you, Supervisor Plan. I work for you for too long. I tend to agree. I don't want to make your guys' job any more difficult, and I respect the process, and I understand the intent. But I tend to agree that the two changes that Jerry just mentioned, I think, are things I could easily support, to try to make this work as well as possible in the interim time, recognizing that either an initiative, or some later task force revised ordinance is going to come down the line, anyway. So we're really talking about a fairly short period of time, really. And I'd like to make it possible for the people to do what they want to do, and not make it some winners and losers. That seems to me to be a wrong answer when we get done.
Any questions?
Would I get clarification, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
Certainly.
Was that Commissioner Rye who was just speaking?
Yes, yes, John.
And Commissioner Rye, you mentioned two modifications. Would those be, number one, to allow a 10 by 10 indoor grow, and number two, to make the maximum number 12, 24?
No, I was referring more to the setback. I wasn't proposing, at least, at this point, changing the number.
And what setback, what setback would you recommend?
I was thinking Supervisor Plan's 25, but even then, I can imagine that's going to be a problem for some people. But it's more realistic than 50.
Thank you.
Yeah, especially if you've got a six-foot fence, anyway. Okay, no further discussion on any of these other points.
I'd like...
Yeah, John, go ahead.
Thank you. I am in favor of allowing 10 by 10 indoor grow area, and I'd also love to see the setback reduced to 25 feet. I think that we may be trying to use zoning to solve a problem that doesn't need this much. I'm all in favor of providing regulations so that law enforcement can keep us safe. And we need to do that, so I'm in favor of this ordinance. But I have a feeling, based on the testimony I've heard tonight, that it may just go too far, and doesn't allow reasonable numbers for medical users who actually need it, and are telling us that six and 12 is not enough. So my preference would be to go with the ordinance that seems to be working in the proposal of 12 and 24.
Okay, further discussion, cool.
Well, maybe we'll, let's have this guy back up one more time, yeah. Yeah. Because he was the one that talked about 10 by 10, and then we're also talking about 12 and 24. So my question would be, do you need a 10 by 10 ordinance, if we're going to do 12 by, 12 and 24?
Yeah, definitely, yes. You need to have a regulation between indoor and outdoor, for sure. So, you know, outdoors, yes, the six is pretty lenient, because, like you said, you know, outdoor crops, sometimes, half of them could fail. You could have, like, a bug that kills half your plants, and then you're stuck with one plant, or something, or three plants. So it's better to be able to have the numbers, and then be able to regulate it better, you know. I mean, if you're going to regulate numbers, maybe regulate pound numbers, like your plants are only allowed to grow this big, in this many pounds, but that is pretty impossible. Exactly, that's pretty impossible. That's why I'm saying, it's like, you've got to be able to have regulations. But yes, a 10 by 10 indoor is definitely what should be done, definitely.
And what about outdoors?
Oh, yeah, do the 12, 24, definitely. Give them their plants, let us...
You're really hung up on that, okay.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. And then, I mean, you can also maybe even regulate, if you're going to grow outdoors, maybe you can't grow indoors. You know, I don't have, I'd love to grow outdoors if I could. My property doesn't allow it. I live on a small property, I can't grow outdoors. I'm forced to grow indoors. If I could grow outdoors, I definitely would.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
I have one more follow-up, I guess, then, for code, not you, sorry, counsel, would be, if this is code enforcement, and they're growing indoors, their only worry would be the family turning them in to the code enforcement, correct? Unless a neighbor finds out that they're growing more than the six to 12 plants?
Right, it's complete and driven.
Okay, that's all, that's what I was wondering.
That's correct. Don't take off your neighbors.
All my neighbors know. All my neighbors know, and they don't care.
In the interest of moving things along, what if we took the existing thing, understanding it's going to get addressed again soon, and this is an interim plan. We took the existing and changed two things, right? One, increase the indoor, or increase the indoor, and I would suggest maybe 100 square feet makes more sense than 10 by 10. I'm not going to penalize somebody because their bedroom happens to be 12 by 8.
Yeah, good.
So, you know, 100 square feet.
100 square feet, yeah.
And as opposed to indoor, as opposed to a number of plants indoor, and a reduced setback for the, to 25 feet, for picking a number out of the air, because we're going to be redoing this again, anyway, right?
We need 15.
So, we pick a number, and I'm open to somebody has a better idea for a number. We pick, we make those two changes, we let it get gone, and then we can get going on the final version of this thing, as opposed to spending all our time trying to get the temporary one done.
Makes sense.
That's a good idea.
I think that's a sensible approach. I understand that may not please everybody, but I think it's a heck of a lot better than where we've been, so.
May I ask for clarification? Are you also looking to keep the plant number at six and 12?
Outdoors.
Outdoors, so six and 12?
Indoors, yeah. Indoors, as many as you can fit into 100 square feet, I would think, right?
I'd like to comment on that.
What's that, John?
Well, I like his idea for those two changes, but I would also like to see a third change to the 12, 24, because I don't think that we need to go so low in order to regulate the problem growers. And I think we're creating problems for the medical legal growers at six and 12.
So, John, what did you have in mind on that?
Well, I agree with everything that's been said, but three changes, instead of two. One would be 100 square feet indoors, 25-foot setback, and then allowing 12 or 24, 12 plants per qualified person or 20 people.
What would be your number, okay?
John, I don't have a, I don't really have a beef with that. The only thing that I do is, you know, people spend a lot of time getting us to this point, and if there's some stakeholder in there that's going to end up having a big problem, because they really felt very strongly about that, you know, somehow or another, we got the six in the first place. And I don't want us to have to circle back around this too many more times. So if we thought we could get to that point and not have to circle around it another couple of times, I could support that as well.
Mr. Chairman, remember, you're just making a recommendation to the supervisors, and if you feel you want to support the 12 and 24 plants like Mariposa, you can. But one thing I did want to clarify, because the proposed ordinance currently says six plants per parcel. Now, you're going to have 100 square foot of indoor, and potentially 12 plants outdoor. Is it an either or? Is it a combination of the two? So this is why council was saying, it gets complicated. So if you could clarify that as well as part of your motion, we would appreciate it.
Well, I'd say that most people are going to try to grow them outdoors, because it seems to be like so much more efficient. If they can't grow it outdoors, then they're going to have to go inside, which is less efficient and more costly. Now, would they try to do both? That's my, I don't know why they would want to do that. If they can get adequate numbers outside, why mess around with paying the electric bill inside?
But we want to make sure we have clarity, because if it's not clear, then the question will be raised. And so if we can have clarity at this point...
Yeah.
I'd like to try.
Okay.
Was that John?
Yeah, thank you. It was my understanding that the reason to consider going to 100 square feet indoors is that thereby, there would be no number limit indoors.
Right. That is right.
So, we're talking about either six and 12, or 12 and 24 outdoors, and also a limit of 100 square feet indoors.
But the question, John, is that and or or? That is, I'm really certain I know where everybody out here stands, but...
Kind of suspect.
But the question is, what are we proposing? Are we proposing and or or? And that's the clarity you're asking for.
I would consider that 100 square feet of row space indoors presents little or no public nuisance or public hazard. And...
I'm losing you, John.
Yes? Was I interrupted?
Not by us.
I think Peggy was trying to say something.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Peggy.
I was, I was losing, John.
Oh, okay.
Can you hear me now, Peggy?
A little better.
Okay, I was, my feeling was that 100 square feet of indoor grow poses little or no public health hazard. And I would allow any parcel to have 12 or 24 plants outdoors, you know, with the setbacks and the fencing, but also allow 100 square feet indoors.
Okay, so you're proposing and rather than or?
Yes, because I don't think that an indoor grow needs to be limited in number, so I don't think we need to include the number in the total for the parcel.
Right, okay. That's clear, Commissioners?
Yes.
Talk about this, both, if you want, which probably isn't going to happen, but too many times. But we, okay, now, we're still on, I think we're making progress, but we've still got this number game. Where are we going to go with that?
May I suggest that you poll the Commissioners on the 12, 24 idea?
Can you hear what, I didn't, I didn't hear.
He wants to say, say we poll whether or not we, how many people could support a 12, 24.
Right, try and get consensus on that issue first.
All right.
I'm okay.
Yeah, I can, I can...
It's fine.
12 and 24.
12, 24.
I also think there's a help there, that you make it consistent with Mariposa, because in Don Pedro, you're going to have, you're going to have one side of the line and the other. And having worked in both counties, that place is different.
Okay, I think we're ready for a motion. Whoever's going to make the motion include...
Did you get Commissioner Mosley's?
No, we didn't.
Oh, yeah. We're still operating on a consensus here, Peggy.
Okay.
Yes or no?
I believe it should be indoors or outdoors, not both.
Yeah, okay, but numbers, 12 and 24, or six and 12?
I guess I could go 12 and 24.
Okay. How about you, John?
12 and 24.
Okay, you're okay. So we got a consensus. Now, we need a motion.
But there's another issue here, though, that she was, the and or, doesn't sound like we have a consensus.
We do have.
Well, she was just said, she was in favor of an or.
Well, the majority seems to have bought into and.
Is that true?
Right?
Is that true?
You guys, with and?
Let's look that way.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, John's and, so, again, I need a motion that includes those changes.
We can get lower on the reduction for, you guys take that motion, that 25's still real big.
Can I have that motion somebody, or...
I'll try.
I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead. I would move...
There's some findings you got to cite.
Exactly. And I got to find them.
Find the findings.
Find the findings, exactly. Can you help me, Bev, where are they?
Yeah, the findings are on page two. They go page, it's findings A through Z.
Okay, I got it now, got it.
I thought that was very good, yes, the whole alphabet.
A through Z, very good.
All right, well, I'll go ahead and try this, and see how far we get. I would move the existing ordinance with findings A through Z with three changes. One, that the number of plants would be 12 and 24 outdoors, 100 square feet maximum indoors, and outdoors. Both, in other words. And now I lost train of thought on the third one.
The setback.
The setback. I understand...
No, no, don't be discussing it, just make the motion.
I think it's 25 feet's going to, a reasonable compromise. I understand that won't make everybody happy, but...
Let's see, did it cover the points?
One second.
Got a motion and a second. Okay, Ms. Shane, want to repeat the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. A motion was made by Commissioner Rye to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance to the board of supervisors with three changes, that the ordinance be modified to allow 12 plants per patient on a parcel for outdoor cultivation, and 24 plants for two or more patients or caregivers on a parcel, and also 100 square feet of indoor cultivation, and to reduce the setback for outdoor cultivation from 50 feet to 25 feet.
Okay, that is the motion, and there was a second, it's on the table. Discussion. Jerry.
Okay, yeah, I think the thing I would like to make sure gets into the record here a little bit on the discussion part of this thing, is that what, part of what I think this does is increases the incentive to do this stuff indoors. And, you know, there's a whole lot of people that are going to be really uncomfortable with marijuana plants growing next door to them, right? Right, wrong, or indifferent. And indoors, they're not going to be uncomfortable, the whole problem kind of goes away. I understand indoors has all kinds of negative connotations from a business point of view, but we're making it a little easier from an incentive point of view. And so that, you know, in the process of doing this, because the supervisors are probably going to make some tweaks of their own to this, and I'd like to make sure they understood that that was the incentive of me bringing up that 100 square feet thing.
Mr. Plan, I also, on the issue of the setback, the reason I'm reluctant to go lower than 25 is exactly what you're saying. There are going to be people next door to these that aren't going to be happy, and you have to balance their desires as well. And I'm sure that's probably how the 50 feet came, about whether 25's enough or 50's too much, I don't know. But it does make it a little easier for some. And I'm hopeful that's still enough of a buffer, you know. I guess time will tell.
Yeah, and always keep in mind, this is temporary. Its lifespan may not be too long. We might be back talking about this in a matter of, I don't know, six months or so, who knows. Any other discussion?
Well, you know...
None.
Yeah, go ahead.
I hate to be belaboring things. But now to the audience, I guess, is that the effectiveness of this, and what the next version of this is going to be, is largely dependent upon this community and how they react with that, right? People are going to be either really glad this law is in place, this regulation's in place, or really unhappy. And an awful lot of that's going to be a function of how it gets dealt with in those, the growers out there. So a little self-regulation would go a long ways.
Absolutely. Okay, no further discussion? If not, I'll call a question, no?
Nope.
Roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Pull up a big sign.
Okay, a motion's been made by Commissioner Rye, seconded by Commissioner Latori, to support the ordinance with the changes that have been discussed. And roll call, Commissioner Rye.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Baker.
Aye.
Chairman Plan.
Aye.
Commissioner Frazier.
Aye.
Commissioner Presibela.
Aye.
And Commissioner Latori.
Aye.
Commissioner Mosley.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, with that, I would like to thank the audience for, you know, for working with us. And you don't always get everything you want, but this is the way system operates, and it was a good process. And win, lose, or draw, I think we followed the rules. And like I say, this isn't the end of the game, but anyway, we've got to start. Thanks again, and with that, this meeting is closed.